Clerk, please call the order.
Adequate notice that this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975, Senator Byron and Bear Open Public's Meeting Act.
Can we have him, the patient, so meditation for more, please? Commission Marshon, could you please leave us in a second for that.
Sir. I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to America, which is one nation, unabiding, indivisible, limited justice for all.
Commissioner Aubrey, here. Commissioner Loos, here. Commissioner Sorrow.
Here.
Mr. Marshon.
Here.
Yes, now I'm clear, now I'm clear.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor, she's excused?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Do I have a motion in second to accept and dispense with the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting? Do I have a motion in second? So.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Clerk, do we have any communications?
No. Do I have a motion in second to open public comment, but on resolutions only?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Okay, anybody who would like to make a public comment on any resolutions, please feel free to. Five minutes, state your name, where you're located, and your shoe size.
It is me. I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield Fairfield Township. On a resolution 2024-107, it's a resolution approving members to the Cumberland County Utilities Authority, and I'm not going to read the names, but one is from Bridgeton and one is from Upper Deerfield Township. And my question is, one of the members from Hopewell is not getting the approval, and that means that there will only be one member on this board from Hopewell Township. I realize that City of Bridgeton is the biggest user, and Upper Deerfield is the next largest user, and Hopewell doesn't use as much, and Fairfield Township uses very little. And is that the reason you're going to have three members from Upper Deerfield Township, one in the Utilities Authority?
If I recall, basically, one is from Noble, right? Right.
Yeah, one is from Noble.
So what I'm getting at is that if there is another person that you think can make an interest in the future, we'd be more than happy to take that. That's what we, I'm sure it was put out there by the CCUA, who was interested in making a board.
Well, I would think you try to make it uniform, and one is leaving from one township, but you would replace it with someone from that township.
People have to show interest, Mrs. Ridgeway. I hope that's probably what I think would be the best thing. If we could put that out there, and if people are interested, I'd be more than happy to entertain it, but it's the board itself at the UA that needs to take a look at it.
I don't think so. But that's your opinion.
Oh, is Mrs. Pachone from Hopewell? Just thinking. Yes. Is she on the board, then? She on the board?
Yes, she is, and she will now be the only member from Hopewell.
She's the only one, okay, okay. Thank you.
And there was two, and I would have thought that she would have looked a little bit better for someone.
Well, maybe, like I said, maybe get somebody of interest.
Well, I hope you're keeping with politics out of it.
Director, just an opinion, that I'd rather have qualified people from the area. It's not, there's no idea that they have to be for a certain, but in this case, they have to be a certain area they got to be from, but as long as they're qualified and they're sitting on the board, and they can make a decision. If you're in Upper Deerfield, you're close to, well, Hopewell's close to Bridgeton, Bridgeton's close to Fairfield, they're all right around each other, it's the same system, so as long as they're qualified, that's really what should really count.
That's what you're looking for. Okay. Any pains on it? Thank you, Mrs. Ridgeway.
Sandy Asavina, Upper Deerfield, but I thought when the board was expand, the CCUA board was expanded, that there was, I don't know if you call it, an arrangement or whatever it was, that there was going to be so many people from each user area, correct?
Good point.
So I haven't seen that list, but I was understanding that there was a list, so maybe if we could get a copy of that, we could see where the board members should come from.
Are we updating files, I think, that we're talking about?
Yes.
And I believe that your proposed appointments can work with them, but we can certainly distribute it in the supplement.
Right, because I know the names of, so far that we've had was just from the user area. That was the main contention, correct, Mrs. SFO? They're all from user areas. Anyone else? There it is.
Dean Hawk, Upper Deerfield, on the same subject, I found over the years that the CCUA, when they had their own choices, had a habit of making really, really bad choices, and I hope that it being chosen the way it is here, it will change it. I thought the makeup of that board was just absolutely terrible.
Presently, or over the last, well, up until, maybe the last year, year and a half?
Okay.
It was like a small circus.
Are you more satisfied with it now?
I haven't been here for a while, honestly, so I don't know what it is now, but I know to walk in there was pitiful, I thought.
Well, I just sworn Todd Birch last week, as Ridgeway was there, and like I said, Mrs. Pachone, I thought she was from Hopewell, thank you for that.
She's from Hopewell.
And so we're slowly putting on people we think that have qualifications to do the right thing, and of course, you probably were aware of what was trying to occur to the UA years, couple of years back, and that was stopped and put to rest. So I think that's moving in the right direction.
Okay.
So let's see how, let's give people a chance, and then, of course, as time goes on, again, if there's interest in those areas, people want to apply for those and CFS, but it's hard to get anybody that's really interested in anything anymore.
Maybe that was why it was where it was.
Okay, thank you.
Those committee members are paying.
Yeah, they swear, I can't even get people to pay, get people to work, and get them better than that. So, all right, anybody else on that, any subjects? Very good, one of the, sort of closing. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
When voting on resolutions, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any commissioner, board member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. If any items requiring expenditures are supported, any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Do I have a motion in second to vote by consent agenda on resolutions 2024-57 through 2024-85?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All favor. I was right, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Do I have a motion in second to adopt resolutions 2024-57 through 2024-85 by consent?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-86, Resolution approving change order number four to contract for engineering service support for the P-25 700 MHC digital trunk radio system, pre-qualified per RFQ number 19-50, as needed architectural and engineering services. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Before I vote, just wanted to talk about this one briefly. If you look at, this is a change order, there's been a number of change orders in the past. This was originally budgeted for $350,000. We're now well over $850,000. So I'm not trying to hold up a project, I'm certainly not trying to say that I don't believe in the underlying project, I'm just concerned regarding how far out of budget this has become. When we sit up here and when we look at something like this, it's hard to look at. Now, I know this specific change order is for eighty-some thousand dollars, and there was past change orders which had amounted to the other, I guess, for about a half a million dollars over what was budgeted for, but when I see something like this, it does give me pause and it does give me trouble. Now, looking into this and speaking with a few people, I've learned that essentially in order to have this project come to a conclusion, these are services that we need to have. So for those reasons and those reasons alone, I will vote yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-87, Resolution authorizing extension of the 2024 temporary budget and approving additional temporary budget appropriations in the amount of $443,900. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Before I vote on this, it had, just had a question, well, I have many questions, Mr. Ridgeway, the budget, what is the exact, what is the budget going to be proposed? I mean, we're doing partial stuff. You explained it to me, I was kind of happy what's going on, what's the timeframe?
I'm trying to spoil my treasure report.
Also, before we give it.
So this is just adding grants in right now, it says grants come in, the state only allows us some, we can call something an emergency temporary, even though it's not really an emergency, just adding something in between the temporary and adopted budget. So it does raise red flags when you see the emergency, but it's, I can't control that language. As for the budget process, we met once with Finance Committee, we need to schedule a second meeting. If we're really aggressive, could introduce the February meeting more realistically, probably not introduce it the March meeting.
Are we going to get more resolutions like this, or you think that, or we're going to wait till March when it's introduced, all this stuff?
As grants come in, if there's any that absolutely need to be added in because of the start date of the grant period, yes, but until we get to the actual introduction of the budget, we may just extend the temporary budget a month at that time, but not until that point, no.
Well, we've already approved spending money for a quarter, basically, right?
Yep.
Okay, so that should be the word, spending, just absorb it.
Right, so this, the temporary budget is really just the first three months of the year. That way it gets you to when the state expects us to have our budget modified.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-88, Resolution authorizing purchase from Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract Vendor for the purchase of medical and surgical supplies for the Rowan Medicine Building on the Rowan College of South Jersey Campus. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
I have a question, why are we buying stuff for internal of this building? We don't owe the, all the buildings would be paid by Rowan, operate by Rowan, why are we buying equipment, stuff?
There was a lease agreement entered into a couple of years ago that said that we would.
Thanks.
What was that lease agreement, do you remember?
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Director, wait, Director?
Yes, Mrs. Sorrow.
I did not hear the answer to Commissioner Aubrey's question. Can we just say that a little bit now?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, so there was a lease agreement entered into back in, I recollect in 2021, where the county essentially was going to construct this building and supply the furniture, equipment, which includes medical equipment, to then be occupied and leased by Rowan University. So, short answer is, we entered into a lease agreement to purchase, that involves us purchasing this for them to then occupy and use.
Director.
I just, we're going to, this type of agreement.
We get, we're going to get paid, Mr. Ridgeway, we're going to get paid back for all this, right? This is part of the agreement.
Over time, because they're going to pass it.
Twenty years, we're going to pieces.
Right, so they're going to be leasing it from us, so over time, we're going to recoup the money that we're outlaying now.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-89, Resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State Contract Vendor for Axon Body Camera licenses and required storage for the Department of Corrections. Do I have a motion in second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-90, Resolution authorizing award of a non-fair and open contract for annual gold login for the county library's database catalog. Do I have a motion in second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-91, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing library and educational books and services. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-92, Resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing security guard services for the Cumberland County Department of Social Services, the Cumberland County Library, in various locations as needed, bid number 23-39. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-93, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for library materials and books for the Cumberland County Library. Do I have a motion in second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-94, Resolution approving Division of Consumer Affairs Offices, Awards and Measures. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Well, a question, who?
Bob Wildin.
Bob Wildin, it's on the agenda.
Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-95, Resolution amending 2022-416, Resolution authorizing application to two and grant agreement with New Jersey Transit and the U.S. Department of Transportation for grant funding under the Federal Transit Act, Section 5311, from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-96, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for expert medical consultants for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Just a question beforehand, the directors here, are they going to be over top of the medical care, I've tried forever the name of it, that we have at the jail, are they going to be over top? Director, I want to ask the question that the GF, I don't know what the name of it is, GFC, are they going to be over top, these doctors over top, their operating?
I think I understand your question.
Go ahead.
And probably I'm best situated, just because it's part of the program, so they're going to be reporting, right, to the court and the Department of Justice about the performance of medical care in the building. So while they're not part of the matrix of people performing services, they are going to be reporting about what services are performed in the building.
Are they going to oversee that? The reason why?
Their job is to report, not to manage.
To support, not to, so are they going to, are they going to report to us that if there's an issue, a deficiency, are they going to say something to us before they go to the court?
The intention is to establish a working collaborative relationship, so that we go to court as little as possible. So of course, we want to have communication early and often, so that we can make corrections as they.
And Director, the reason why I bring it up is that this, the GFC, they were, many deficiencies, it caused many losses, because they, there was, their job performance is lacking, and they were, I consider them responsible.
This goes back a while.
This goes back, like, two, three years, four years, so this is, so I hope.
Would that be directed?
No, no, it's not necessarily, but what Mr. Carr is saying is, that is good, but it's nice to see that we have someone that, you know, be over top and say something to us that we can correct, and get on top of them before there's an issue, before there's a problem.
Commissioner Aubrey, I think you've seen the progress that we've made.
Yeah, absolutely.
Exactly. And this is just another layer of keeping us basically informed and out of, out of the jailhouse, in a sense, I mean.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carr. Yes.
Commissioner Loos?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshon?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleo?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-97, Resolution authorizing amendment to shared service agreement exercising option to review shared services with agreement with the City of Bridgeton. Do I have a motion in second?
Second.
Commissioner Aubrey?
All right, I have a question of this. This branded trailer goes back to 2018. Most of our leases, most of our shared service agreements last that long, the?
It's legal to have them last that long, but as to the utility of this particular instance, I'm totally unfamiliar with this federal trailer.
Well, the question I have, Director, is that, I don't buy the, because we, we're actually a current shared service, but not, if they were to have it since 2018, now it's 2023, maybe they should look to purchase a utility trailer. I don't, our public works person is here, can you describe what is being leased to the, Mr. Ryland?
I'm not familiar with the condition of the trailer.
I wasn't here in 2018, I'm not familiar with the trailer.
The trailer, you don't know?
It's an open utility trailer that apparently was destroyed and they replaced, if I understand correctly.
It's a new one, it's working, new.
Well, it's never been within mine, we've never looked after it, we've never done anything with it, so.
It was in an accident while Bridgeton had it, and then they replaced it using the insurance funds.
Okay. That's why, that's why we're mending the lease, okay. I, Director, I'm just, I don't buy share, that's what we do, but it's, share is, use it, give it back, it's not a five-year commitment to this.
Well, I'll tell you what I'd like to do then, if you don't mind, why don't you look further into this trailer van and find out some of the situation with this trailer, and look into the lease.
So given there's a motion, could be?
How long would we do it this for, Mr. Carr? How long would we do it this for?
All right, sorry. I think this is because it's a new trailer, that's my, that was my understanding.
No, I think the lease term ended, but then we found out that they had replaced the trailer during the term of the lease.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But since there's a motion on the floor and there's questions, perhaps what you want to do is have a motion withdrawn and look to table this for long enough to do what we diligence, because there are.
I would like to make a motion to?
Director?
Question, Director.
Yes.
Okay, continue. Not to be ideal up here. Jim, go ahead.
Since this is a brand new trailer, it caused them to enter an accident, I don't, I don't see any purpose in doing any of this, moving forward. All you're doing is signing a new lease, and if it's not off the city, I think that we can just move forward with it, that's my opinion, and only because it's brand new, they had to replace it. So if nobody came out of their pocket, came out of the insurance company, we can get a new trailer and just lease it. So I think it's a, it's a good situation.
That's, and that's the reason why I asked, what was the condition, because I heard it was an accident, I did not know that it was replaced, I thought we were actually leasing a damaged trailer.
Six and a half by twelve-foot trailer.
So it's renewed for one year.
And it's a 2024, it's branded.
It's branded.
Only because they got an accident, that we wouldn't even note about it, right?
And it's for a one-year term.
There you go.
Director, I have a problem with the one-year term, but I would like, this renewed one year, but I don't want to continue, if they want the trailer, buy from us, and they can have it, so.
Let's, let's make that happen.
But there's also a danger. But there's also a danger. All right, let's, let's, Commissioner Sorrow, we understand your feelings, why don't we just take a look at census of what we want to do here? Do we want to table it?
Well, I made the motion table it because I would like to look into it.
I'd like to hear a second on that.
Yeah.
Wait, there was a motion.
I would have to withdraw my, I would have to withdraw my motion.
If that's what you care to do. Okay, do we care to do that?
No, I'm not so inclined to do that. I do agree with Commissioner Sorrow when I do think that it's a one-year lease and I'm okay with that, and I think that I do appreciate the shared service agreement. And if we can assist the City of Bridgeton, however, at the end of that lease, perhaps they, we can offer-
Because it's from 2018.
We can offer that, if they'd like to purchase it, then.
So we have two commissioners that would not like to move it. Commissioner Marchand, do you think we need a five-month leave or, Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
So at the end of that lease period, perhaps we can offer-
It's during 2024.
Yeah, it'll be five months, so.
So in five months, you're talking about this.
Exactly. Yes. So we can move forward with the motion that's on the floor right now, and at the end of that time period, we can reevaluate and see if they would like to purchase it.
Commissioner Luz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-98, resolution authorizing Cumberland County Engineers sign dam, dam reports.
I'm not laughing at that, all right? It's the Seagull Lake Dam we're looking into.
Careful how you announce.
That's right, exactly.
There's several dams they're looking at.
Do I have a motion and second?
Some move.
Second. The question, do all the dams get signed on by our county engineer?
Yes.
Okay, so we always have to approve the county engineer's side, or we have to allow them to do that?
Sure, you're authorizing him to take an act on behalf of the county.
Do we take any responsibility of the condition of these dams and we just report?
So you have an outside engineer report, we accept the report, and then we submit that to the state.
And it's, our engineer signs off on the outside report, is that what you-
That this is an act that represents the county.
Okay, thank you.
And as to responsibility, it's no more or less, right? You need to have responsibility, especially on roads or on dams, where you have frontage on the lake or a road crossing a dam.
Commissioner-
Yes.
Commissioner Luz, yes. Commissioner Sorrow.
Question, before I debate, are we, are we going to have access, meaning the commissioners have access to their reports?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Do we have access to their reports before they sign?
Most definitely.
Well, that's-
Well, you're authorizing them to sign it. So it's, you can't stop them from signing them if you pass this resolution. They're directing them to sign. But you can read them.
Yes, but can we say it before they sign it, so?
Well, it's, we're doing it tonight, so.
You're about to authorize it.
Yeah, I guess at some point you have to trust your professionals.
Yeah, this has got to go through the DEP and everything else. Yeah, we're not doing this, we're not doing this because the engineer wants to do it, it's because the DEP requires it, to be clear.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-99, resolution amending, resolution 2023-857, a resolution declaring surplus in unneeded property and authorizing transfer titles to the City of Millville for 2006 Chevy Palat, 117,416 miles, bid number two, FZ6MLVB9YAB17290, asset number 7338, and 2009 Chevy Silverado Utility Truck, 198 miles, 501 miles, bid number one, GBHC44K19F179287, asset number 7958. Do I have a motion and second?
I'll make the, second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Luz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-100, resolution authorizing Cumberland County Board of Vocational Education to submit a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Education for securing our children's future bond act, Career and Technical Education Program Expansion Grant. Do I have a motion and second?
Some move.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
I just, before I vote, I, there are a lot of, I had a lot of questions on this, and I'm just going to state, I got my questions to answer, but the, I was very concerned with this, that we were building another building on the, our college campus, and this program of adult education, which I'm very supportive of, and many members here are very supportive of adult education, the trades, vocational trades. This, if we do this, we're actually going to build off to our CC Tech. It also will include, it will actually be a program which would add more spaces for our kids, instead, our high school kids to trade, do the trades, which is-
Yeah, may I also add to that a little bit too? It's not just the trades, it's actually manufacturing.
Well, I was, I'm in a role here, so, all right, so that, the first part of that is, well, it is the trades, it's going to be welding, the HVAC, this is going to create spots of that, also plumbing, electrical, additional spaces, almost 25 more slots per year, and the, as the directors mentioned, the advanced manufacturing is a pathway to the advanced manufacturing, which, which I, Commissioner Luz kind of forebode, that we would reach it out to the private industry, which I like, to allow them to get involved with this, that the kids would actually get trading at their, at their place of business, leading to-
Adults, too.
Adults, too. So it's actually, so it's all cop seeing, it's the beginning, not the beginning, kind of the couple of steps of getting this together, that we will actually have a healthy program of trade program in Cumberland County. It's a $10 billion, a little over $10 billion, we have to batch it, 25% batch, but it's a really good step in the right direction for helping our kids get into the trades, which is dearly needed. But I do mention, one thing we are on top of in the state of New Jersey is the trades. Cumberland County needs, has more trades than any other county in the state of New Jersey. So this adds to that, helps to improve our position. So, my vote is yes.
Commissioner Luz.
My vote is absolutely yes. This is a great development that, you know, we granted this fund to move forward with this project, would bring a school of manufacturing to CC Tech. It would work in partnership with Office of Mil, which is already existing on the CC Tech property, and it would allow, it would serve as another program at Cumberland County Technical High School, which I know we've received criticism of in the past, that it's an academy school, not a VOTech school, and this just adds, again, to their roster and the curriculum in the technical trades as far as manufacturing. I believe we have almost 200 applications of students who want to get into this program, so there's definitely a need and an interest, and it goes, it will be used during the day for our students, and it will be used in the future for our adult education programs. So I am more than happy to vote yes, I'm very excited for this project.
Commissioner Sorrow.
I have one of the questions that I have. Now, Commissioner Albrecht made a statement, if my quote is correct, all right, they are going to build off of the CC Tech?
Correct.
They are building an additional building, sort of adjacent to where they're building the domestic life of medicine currently. So it is on CC Tech property.
It will be, it will be-
It's on property, Jim, that's a thing to, there'll be no real connection other than a vantage that will be closed off at certain times.
No, I understand. I mean, my question is, I know it's going to sound greedy, but it is what it is. You know, if you're looking at $10 billion, you're going to try to build a building.
No, that, there is, that's only, Commissioner Sorrow, I don't mean to interrupt, but that's only a portion of the budget for this building. That is not the completed part of that budget. That is only a part, it's one component, there are many other components. And actually, we're very fortunate to be able to find this grant fund, these grant funds, to put towards this project.
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
I was trying to figure out where it says, up to a maximum of $40 billion. I'm asking, why, are we allowed to go more than the $10 million?
I did ask that question. There's, it's only, there's only $15 billion left in that grant. There's been three rounds. This is the third round. We didn't apply for the first two rounds, that's why we're eligible, and there's only 15 left, and our, the person that's spearheading says, she didn't want, she didn't want to be too grainy, that's why she only put in for $10 billion, and allowed the other districts who are eligible to vie for the other $5 million. It doesn't mean we're going to get it, but that's what she thought, and I thought that was, the logic was good, so at least that they could throw up $5 million to the rest of the state.
Commissioner Sorrow, we were late to, we were late to the game, applying for that grant, it was last minute.
It's actually due, I believe, February 8th, correct? So that's before our next meeting. We're lucky to be able to get in on this round, and hopefully get this one.
It is the third and final round, so this is it, so.
I wasn't prepared to answer for me.
Yeah, so that's why, but good question, thank you for asking.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
I can't agree with Commissioner Luz anymore. I'm very excited by this. This is a great opportunity, and I'm more than happy to vote yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Mr. Foley, yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-101, authorization for shared service agreement between Cumberland County and the Cumberland County Board of Health for use of the Red Barn at the Cumberland County Fairgrounds. Do I have a motion and second?
Some move.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Luz.
Yes, as the lead is on to the Department of Health, I know that our staff and everyone at the Department of Health is very excited about this opportunity to partner and have a place that they can utilize, have all of those facilities that they require should we have another emergency situation, so yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-102, resolution authorizing transfer for the bays of Cumberland County Sheriff's Office of Mercotist Detection, K9, known as T Alex Chiksenko. Do I have a motion and second?
I'll make the motion.
Some move.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Luz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-103, resolution authorizing for shared service agreement between Cumberland County and the Cumberland County Board of Health for an employee to be placed with the Cumberland County Department of Public Works Mosquito Commission. Do I have a motion and second?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Albrecht.
The question is, are they short-handed? Is that why they need a health person there, or we've never had one there?
So the, the need came when you did a shared services agreement, to try to educate and assist the townships.
So this, so this, with them, get on board so they can help us with the work, and perfect. All right, thank, thank you, yes.
Commissioner Luz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-104, resolution authorizing shared service agreement with downtownship to provide assistance concerning, concerning storm damage. Do I have a motion and second?
I'll make the motion.
I would like to second it, but is it possible to have somebody speak on this, put it to the audience, or not?
We have motion and a second, then there'd be discussion, and if you want to give way on discussion to somebody talking, if they can make your points better than you can, if that's what you're looking to do?
I'll just, maybe to see what we're doing with this, but, that's it.
Okay.
Actually, I don't know if game, is it, the, actually, I had to call to some residents that they had, well, actually, I called to talk to game originally, that both ends of the island were wiped out, the bulkheads or the edges were wiped out of both.
I can interject, there's a motion and a second, if there's, I'm not sure what-
Did we use a second or a-
Did I second, I seconded, okay.
No, you made the motion.
I made the motion.
You wanted a second, you wanted a second.
Right, and I was just, I said second, I would like to second, yes.
All right, discussion, I'm sorry to-
Just, just, actually, I, two together, I called for residents, but also gave, gave smart.
Why don't we just make the vote, and then we'll, we'll call up Neil, because you're familiar with the actions we took there. I've had several calls with the mayors over the period of time during the storm, but let's get the people who were there and on the scene. So I think that'd be a best bet.
Before we go, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. According to the resolutions, if I read it correctly, this one and the next one, when it comes to Lawrence Township and we're going to share service, do we already have a schedule in place on how we charge and how much we charge per hour, because the townships are going to pay you back, reimbursing us? Do we already have something in place for this?
Shared service agreements are already written. Are you actual expenses? Can you hear me? And it's designed to-
I hear you. What I'm saying is, they're supposed to be reimbursed.
It's designed to facilitate-
The question is, do we have a schedule on how we charge?
We can, uh- It would be actual expenses, right?
Right, it's, it's based on actual, so that, whatever work we're doing would have to be tracked as far as employee time, any materials or supplies used, and it would have to be built on actual, on all invoices, if it's substantially to be supplied.
Well, the question is, would we charge per hour for employees?
It's all over the place.
It kind of depends on the employee and for their-
Yeah, there's, everyone's different.
It's designed to facilitate reimbursement in the event FEMA covers this event, right? FEMA needs an agreement to back it up, and then we calculate actual expenses.
So we're just charging exactly what we pay the employees, that is my, is that my question? I mean, that's my question?
But can you get reimbursed?
Nobody's answering.
Yes.
Yes, the answer is yes. So whatever, whatever expenses aren't incurred by us, it would be reimbursed, yes.
So there's a, there's a track record of, so we get-
The rate of pay depends on the employee and the job and the task and all those things.
I think shared services-
Day, week, probably.
Okay.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Luz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-105, resolution authorizing shared service agreement with Lawrence Township Concerning Cedar Lake Dam. Do I have a motion and second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Luz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-106, resolution approving settlement in the litigation order of Need of Police First Cumberland County et al., Superior Court of New Jersey Law Division, Cumberland County, Docket Number CUNL 000817-21. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz, yes. Commissioner Soro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-107, resolution appointing members of the Cumberland County Utilities Authority. Do I have a motion in second?
Can I interject before we go on this, just because this was a topic of discussion? And I did receive outreach and maybe somebody here can correct me if I'm getting incorrect information, but I'm hearing Brandon Hankin should be reflected as hopeful and Dean Delacqua should be represented as notable. There might have been an error in the resolution.
Just have a question, is it required that the CCUA within their service area, that's where board members have to come?
And that's the bylaws we discussed, yes.
Okay, well, billable is not in the CCUA service area.
Yeah, it's not a requirement for every board member and I promised to circulate the bylaws tomorrow, I just don't have.
So some members could be from the service area and other.
The service area needs to be represented, is the way I read it.
So we have one service, one member for that service area, that suffices if we could have someone from anywhere else in the county.
That's accurate.
Uh huh. Okay.
Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Soro.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Good evening. We began the month of December with a balance of $34,447,337.68. We had cash receipts for the month of $10,549,676.31. Disbursements of $18,882,45.61 ending the month of December with a balance of $26,114,968.38. Itemized lifts of investments are attached cumulatively totaling $61,961,61.65. So I was planning to talk a little bit about the 2024 budget, but somebody asked a question. So right now, Finance Office, we're just going through our end of year tax filings, the W2s, 1099s, 1095s with Human Resources. We're also in the process of trying to file our annual debt statement, our annual financial statement, which are statutory forms that submitted to the New Jersey Division of Local Government Services. And as you know, we're working on the 2024 budget with Finance Committee and hope to have something to introduce at either the February or March meeting. There's a lot of moving pieces with that, scheduling school board of estimates meetings, making sure that if there's any capital ordinance that is drafted in time, making sure that we have all of the tax ratable information and then any additional disclosure items that the state requires on the budget. So for example, what the state provides from the Division of Family Development. So they provide something for us and then we have to show it as it did it out in the budget because they like to show to the public, hey, the state's contributing money and the public is benefiting it. I don't think you need it on there, but I'm getting off topic. So that's kind of just an update where we're at, Treasurer's Report, there's a financial revenue and expenditure listing as of the end of December that was supplied in the board packets. End of the year with a balance of fund balance, which is also known as surplus of $22,600,000, roughly. So the motion in second, you guys can accept and file the Treasurer's Report as described and provided.
Do I have a motion in second?
I'll make the motion.
Second, sorry.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion in second, authorizing payment of all salaries from wages?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion in second to open public comment? Or move business?
Open public comments.
Sandy Asavito, Upper Deerfield Township, on Resolution 2024-92 about the security, does the Sheriff's Department provide security for the county buildings and offices?
So was that one related to RST?
Yes.
Yeah, Sheriff's Office is in our Social Services building. This one also services the library, so the need for the change order for that one because there were, I think additionally authorized hours. So as opposed to the original bid, there's a certain schedule, there were some hours that were authorized in excess of that, so that's what the change order was for the library portion. But the Sheriff's has officer presence at the Division of Social Services building.
So we have the Sheriff's and this company providing security?
And are the wages normally slightly lower for security officers coming from this agency rather than our Sheriff's officers from their wages, right?
They also have Sheriff's Department.
It actually is beneficial if we don't need that level of security, but this was just a discrepancy of a few hours, as you said.
On 2024-94, is that a new hire or a promotion, the director?
Twenty?
That's a new hire.
Replaces the former sheriff, who is now the township.
It's a part of position.
On 2024-107, the CCUA one, you're right, Delacqua I think is from Millville. And honestly, I felt a little uncomfortable with Mr. Soleo's reaction to Mr. Carr's statement that it's open to county people as well. I find it difficult to be objective if you're not from the users group being on that board. I don't think that it's right that people that aren't of the user group should be on that board. I think they don't have the objectivity that they need. We weren't, that board was, that utility was under attack a couple of years ago and I'd hate to see a repeat of anything close to that. And I think bringing in people that are not users of the system leave us exposed to that type of, so I hope you limit, if not eliminate, people on that board that are not users of the system.
That's fair.
I think you're asking.
The bylaws that Mr. Carr was going to bring to our attention, he will again extract any of the due diligence and in the verbiage of that particular bylaw and see what that represents. Because if it's stated in the sense where there's somebody from the outer portions of the county other than the users, and it's stated that way, we'll see what we can do to adhere to the wishes of the users if necessary. But again, I'm just stating that, again, it's like anything else in the job market. I don't care what you pay these people, get them to work and see if they actually volunteer.
Historically, I think Commissioner Quinn served some time from Millville as a utility authority as.
I do recall that. But that's, again, I'm not, historically, I can't, I can only look at what we have.
That's why I'm offering you that because, right?
As treasurer and not a board member though, he wasn't a voting, a voting member.
Director, during this, the best of how to be cleaned up, all those members were from the service areas. I don't know what that would say, that every member was a member of the four areas that they're supposed to.
And the same members, there were some other members there from the same area.
It wasn't, it wasn't a outside area.
Well, I'm saying, there were some members there that evidently were not in favor and were trying to bring the UA to monetization and bringing the proper people in actually kept that facility from being monetized. So I think we're making smart decisions and the people who are volunteering, we are vetting them best we can. Where they're located, we try to look at where they're located in that area. And I don't know where everyone is located, I don't pay attention to that until somebody tells me that something got in line.
Well, Director, Mr. Delacqua, who's from Millville, actually was a Britch's water sewer person. So he was very well versed on objection, my objection is what Ms. Asavito's saying, but you can't get a probably more qualified person.
Well, I have an issue with Mr. Delacqua, I agree with you on that, but.
Well, that's.
Well, that's how, that's how he works.
For now, for now. And when you start opening it up and expanding it, that's when you run the problem.
His resume came to me.
That was going to be my comment to you.
Exactly, and it came to me and he looked very qualified and we made that adjustment. Now, again, you know, you can look into certain things in any which way you want to look into, but I think these decisions that we're making are in favor of the UA, not to hurt it, so.
That's fine, I hope it continues. I'm just saying that with that flexibility comes abuse sometimes and I just don't want to see it happen.
Not this board, and maybe you're right, possibly in the future. I don't plan on living forever.
Excuse me?
I don't plan on living forever.
On the 2024-100, on the VOTAC, we're obligating ourselves to cost overruns as well. I mean, I realize it's a grant and we have to pay a large portion, but we're obligating ourselves to cost overruns as well. What is the checks and balances on those overruns because that is definitely an area ripe for abuse. So if we can keep an eye on that, like you did with the broadband, I mean.
Thank you. Director, well, that's where you know, which is kind of the moment that that building, that behavioral science building came $800,000 under budget. So I credit this commission for doing its due diligence to make sure that, and also our staff being on top of that, I'm kind of proud of that. So if that's our track record, I hope that continues and I.
I do wish, I do wish.
And I press that we will do that, so.
Just had to make me do it. Good evening, Nancy Richway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. I really enjoyed the dialogue this evening on this board. Thank you. There was some pretty good dialogue. Are we going to be transparent as the state at last year? This board, are you going to tell us?
Yes.
Okay.
And as you can see, we're having those conversations right out here, so.
I'm happy about that. So what's going on with the school in Millville, are we buying it?
I mean, to give the update. Right. It's in the hands of an engineer to come up with what it looks like price wise to put the building back into use. And once we get that back, the board will have to make some decisions whether that looks like a smart idea or not.
We haven't got that back yet.
That's accurate.
How about any of the studies that we paid for last year? We paid for an awful lot of studies last year. Is there any updates on some of the studies that we paid for, like the park system and broadband and anything else that we paid to this school?
Let's go to the park systems, that's the first subject matter. Matt, you want to speak to that, please?
Just as an update, so as you recall, the, we took over completion of the fairgrounds plan and rough draft is planned to be released to the review committee, which has been established by Commissioner Lutz this week. That review committee will review it and then we will release it more openly once we have a second draft. That's where we are with park planning at this point.
And also, Mr. Richway, to speak to your point about transparency, that was my effort in making sure that all of the committees that were involved in that project or were affected by it had some kind of input to it as well.
Correct, the review committee is comprised of members of the 4H Advisory Commission, the Recreation Commission, and the Fair Association, in addition to Ms. Lutz.
We've also employed a person to start putting the park stuff, our rules together so we can actually start marketing some of our parks to, parks have to stand on its own, so we have actually started reviewing, our solicitors reviewing rules, what's been put together, it's not filed yet, right?
Right.
Okay, so that's some of the things that's been done, so.
Any updates on the broadband, a little more?
No, it's premature at this time.
Okay, the other thing I'd like to say is, I'm going to hold judgment for another month or two about commissioners attending their meetings that they're supposed to, but Ms. Richway is watching, okay? I'll be keeping a score.
Anybody else want to cut to public comment?
I, can I wait a moment? No.
Why don't we cut to public comment? The members of the commissioners, is that good?
Well, there's somebody in the public that I was going to ask, they would speak. Mrs. Selton. I noticed that you're here, would you mind giving us a little bit of an update on what's happening in downtownship? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but. Thank you. You don't always have to have you here, so.
I was actually in the neighborhood earlier and I've been trying to get to as many county commissioner board meetings as I can, and it was 100 and counted last week and.
It's a very special thing to have you here. We're.
Time is, I appreciate it. For those of you who may not know, I'm Jane Maselta, I'm the State Director for New Jersey Rural Development. It's a missionary under the USDA and we make investments in rural areas. And obviously, much of Cumberland County is considered rural for many of our programs. And to the commissioner's point, in downtownship, we've made a very significant investment in the township's interest in providing sewer system for its residents. And it was referred to earlier in the agenda about the most recent storm. As a result of this storm.
Can I mute him?
As a result of this storm and previous storms, residents there in this, in that community have either failing or failed septic systems, many residents in Cumberland County experience this as well.
Commissioner Soro, can you mute, please? Can you mute, please? I'm hearing every wrinkle of your paper and everything else in here. Thank you.
And through our water and waste disposal program, we've provided some significant resources to downtownship for their ability to create a sewer system in Fortescue and Gandy's Beach. To date, USDA, New Jersey Rural Development's investment has been $15 million. $13 million of that has been in grant funds. The goal here is for there to be a treatment facility in Fortescue, followed by the sewer system to the individual residents there in Fortescue and then in the second phase to the residents of Gandy's Beach. We are in the process now of finalizing the funding for the Phase 2, which is the Gandy's Beach portion of the project, but in the meantime, we are expecting for the county to pass a resolution in future board meetings to, you know, take on the project along with USDA Rural Development, as well as our partners in our financing, the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank and the Department of Environmental Protection. So all of us working together are working to provide that community the resources it needs in order to stand up a sewer system. As many of you are probably aware, there's a, there's a great need, one, for individual homeowners to continue to be able to own their home and need this, need the septic system, need the sewer system to replace their failing septic system, but also, which is to the mission of USDA Rural Development, is to be able to allow that community to grow and thrive and exist. There were many communities along the Delaware Bay over the years that, that, you know, have experienced, you know, residential flight. And New Jersey Rural Development is really committed to helping residents along the bay be able to live that quality of life, and many of them work in local jobs, particularly in the shellfish industry. So it's also important for us to be able to ensure that there's water quality in that bay where we derive shellfish industry and so it's protect those jobs. Many of those jobs are, you know, generational workers and residents. And as we know and appreciate, those are jobs and those are incomes when, when those folks spend money, they spend it locally. So it continues to grow our economic development activity in that region. And so that's part of our, our mission and an explanation for, for our investment to date. So thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity to.
Thank you, Mrs. Selton, certainly for that update. And I know that you have worked so very hard on making sure that this project continues to be successful and move forward. Do you have any anticipation of what kind of contribution you're going to need to complete this project from the county?
Well, so the first phase is financed. It's a project of just about $24 million and the second phase will be another $9 million. We expect, working with Congressman Van Drew, has, in this current budget, knock on wood that Congress passed as a budget, has a, what's called a congressional discretionary, congressional directed spending. It's for $4 million grant funds for second phase. That leaves an additional $5 million. the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, the Infrastructure Bank, or coming through to Rural Development for an additional source of funds. The county is the partner, so the funds that we have loaned the township are a direct loan to them, and the rest is, is going to be coming through the county. You're going to serve as the, as the primary borrower, and then your agreement will be with the township and its residents. And I should also mention, besides the direct funding that we provided for the, for the construction, we also are going to be able to assist the residents in two additional ways. One is you're standing up a new utility. And we have a technical service provider under contract with us, and we have prioritized downtownship to receive the guidance from that technical assistance provider to help the utility with its billing practices, its statements, its reporting requirements, all the things that will make a utility process run efficiently, effectively, and make it cost-effective for, for the town to maintain. And then the second is, it's, we have a program through our home repair loan, home repair program that will allow the individual residents to come to us. Depending upon their income and their age, they may qualify for up to $10,000 worth of grant funds or a 1% loan. And those funds would be able to assist them in, one, the closing of a septic system, which is a considerable cost, as well as the hookups to the system.
And that's a really important part of, component of this project because I've been following this project since its inception, when Mayor Campbell kind of started that ball rolling years ago. And that was a really big concern with the residents, that they would not be able to afford, many of them lived paycheck to paycheck.
Right.
Months to months, they would not be able to afford the hookup. So that is a really integral part of this project, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to credit Mrs. Seltzer for also, she's been very involved with other parts of this county, trying to get similar sewer water provided to them, and actually has helped us organize meetings with D E P to figure out, figure out what they can provide for these commercial township, Fairfield Lawrence Township, even actually after discussion, Shiloh, Hopewell, Stone Creek, those areas.
Yeah, Marsh.
Marsh also, that, so we actually are in the process of the technical assistance is being brought, figuring out who's filling out the paperwork, working through the CDC. So we're actually even a great asset for that also. It's, it's percolating, but it's, it has to go. But, so I really appreciate that every, every time you, at different meetings, you've said, hey, how can we help? What does we can do? What sort of ideas? So we really, I really appreciate that, so thank you.
You're welcome. I was, I was in Bridgeton earlier today and I gave a presentation in front of the Chamber of Commerce, and I explained that over the last three years, since President Biden was elected, and I'm a, I'm a political appointee, I'm the president's choice for, for this position, in the, in the three years, we have provided about $494 million back in taxpayer funds into the state of New Jersey just through my programs alone. But only 21 million of that has come into Cumberland County. So I'm really anxious to be able to encourage Cumberland County towns, residents, and businesses to, to come to us, use our programs so that we can make. I'm a Vineland resident, born and raised, went to Vineland High School, Rutgers University. So Cumberland County is home to me, and so I would really love to see that 21 million start go further north and encourage, again, you know, the, the communities in Cumberland County to, to come to us for, for assistance. That's why we're here and want to be able to support rural way of life. My family were farmers, and so it's very important to me to be able to assist, assist this area, so thank you.
Thanks.
Just want to say also that right now in Gandy's Beach, work is actually being done, now it'll be started very shortly, on all the bulkhead repair for Gandy's Beach. It was already approved and also has been awarded to South State, but again, a southern New Jersey, Cumberland County company that is going to be using quite a bit of work down there. And this is all something that's going to feed a lot of the oyster industry, the shellfish industries down there in Burton-Borden. And Gandy Beach, the road into Gandy's Beach is on our radar big time right now because of the washout. In fact, Neil, if you want to speak to that, I would really appreciate that, what you've done. So I'm not taking any care of you, but I know you're on the spot, so if you want to try.
If you have any questions, be happy to.
We might need you again, by the way.
And I appreciate that. And, Mr. Richway, you asked about transparency and just updates on different reports and projects, and so that's why I'm going to take that opportunity to call Mrs. Seltzer. Thank you.
Just an update, so, so far to date, we have, so basically, just to give you a overview, but what happened during the storm was the seawall collapsed on the west end, east side, again, on Cove Road, it's called. So to date, we have rebuilt the seawall with what we call a generic term, riprap, which is large stone, smaller than a boulder, but it goes from two inches up to 12 inches. So we've rebuilt that to about a height of four feet above the road. So that should be able to withstand any, anything similar to the storm that just came through. And then tomorrow, we're starting to put back what are called bin blocks, which are large concrete, basically legos, concrete legos that you just stack together. We'll begin that tomorrow. And then we did another repair on the west end of the, I don't know if you're familiar, there's a little cul-de-sac on the west end where the road heaved up. And basically, so we put back, all that, today we finished that. So up to date, we've got about 500 tons of riprap that rebuilt that wall, 100 man-hours, our trucks and excavators, our big loader. So we've put, in a week and a half, we put a lot of work in down there.
And this is something that, you know, from my understanding, it's been very difficult for the townships to get any cooperation from the county in the past. And so it's nice to hear that our people are out there working hard, doing a great job. And, you know, with credit insurance services, yes, we'll have to be reimbursed for some of these programs. But again, also, you know, we're looking for some disaster relief and whatever we can get back from the state or the federal government. Believe me, we'll go after it because it's necessary, because there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be developed as well. So I want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Carr, you have to speak to anybody else about that, or you're good? Anybody else? And then we're going to bring the. Close, yes.
Motion to close public.
Second.
Call favor.
Aye.
Commissioner reports.
I pretty much just gave mine, but anybody else? Or, Marsha?
We'll make it short and sweet. As Ms. Richway did point out, I like the dialogue that we have, and to let everyone know, we have plenty of dialogue between ourselves on this commission outside of these meetings. I'm proud to work with the members on this commission. I look forward to the rest of this year and the rest of my term here, but so far, the communication has been great and all the questions have been answered, not only by commissioners I may have, but the administrative staff. So I do appreciate all that and I look forward to continuing working with everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, two things, Library Board met, had, we talked, I've talked in the past about the grant we received, which we got the 29th of December, we received. That Morse River Township is ecstatic. They're working to finalize a property, which we have to do shortly. Just to point out to the public how diverse this library is going to be, what it's going to provide, we've talked about a, to provide toilet lavatories so people that are down there at our bay and are coming back to shore could stop and take advantage, clean, go to bed. It sounds so simple, but it's not so simple. And we also talked about offices that are, we could bring services, county services down there that they can have a place to sit down, they can come right to the township people that, to provide, and it could be anything from surrogate services to, to pick veteran services that they actually can go down there to do it. We've talked to, well, groups having meetings, also having the East Point Lighthouse, having a room. And when I was talking to the East Point Lighthouse people about, well, we talked about the library providing a place where they can display, talk about the history, the first thing, this is what makes this great. If, well, Port Elizabeth, the store, said needs a place to display, their building is kind of shuttered, I said, well, I think, I think that's perfect, that could be done. And this is, we'll have progress for kids, help the literacy, and the county with Morse River Township and Commercial Township, help them maybe increase our position there for the long-term. I'm sure that I've, our director has many ideas more than I've shared here, but I'm very excited about this and it could be a start of many other things, including our middle mile heading down there along with the end mile, having a place, a destination point, having a government building down there. And I just throw this to you as a long-term, if, just by having the building there, if other businesses open up around it because it has communication, it has activity, it has people in and out, it could turn a lot of things, really move things in the right direction, Morse River Township, which it already is, has great leadership already, so, including commercial. Had the 4-H meeting, good discussions, usual, their numbers are, are up, they have a full gen of activities. I think they're close to 500, I should quote it, it was 400 or 500 kids, which is not as high as they, I guess it's where they were.
That's a big uptick from what they were.
Yeah, it's down near 200, so, and so this is really good news. And actually, the prosecutors here, I've been wanting to call you because of the idea of getting into the schools, the 4-H club, they would love to be part of that process that we do. Maybe not build a community center, but use our community centers or every community of our schools. I would love to start that process with the director's permission to start.
There's a lot of schools that'd be interested in that.
So the 4-H could be a facet to that process. It even adds more, Commissioner Rose mentioned that the, they did mention that they're asked to be on the board to be, help look at the, look at the, the parks. And there was an idea, just to throw this out to the board, I would love to have discussion with it, that someone suggested that, that the Cumberland County, it's, it works down there, there are the park opportunities, and one of those park opportunities, I throw it to the commissioners here, is that there's a park called Cedar Dome that is, is a, right on the Morse River, on the Manetteco River, and it should be, maybe it's an idea of looking at additional parks throughout the county. It's a start, Morse River Township is real keyed on it, also the city of Millville. It's just that, here's where it starts, ideas start flowing because we're putting it out what we want to do. There are also, think of other areas that would be great assets in this county, provide good recreation, good outdoors, outdoor opportunities for our people. So it's just, I know the discussion is a start, and it's not just one-sided, so I threw that out, and I hope we're not forgetting anything that.
I think you've hit about just about everything.
I know, thanks, but I'll let it go. That's our people.
Here's an interesting time.
Well, it's committee, it's committee, but Commissioner reports, what's.
Well, the public did ask about transparency, so Commissioner Allberg is just trying to give the people what they want, you know? And, and, but I do really, I, I can't, I don't mean to harp on that comment that you made, but I think it is really important because, you know, we all go around, we campaign, we go all over this county, we talk to people in every sort of corner and avenue, and we ask them, you know, what's on your mind, what's concerning you? And there's two things that always really come out from all of those conversations, and I'm pretty sure everybody up here would agree, and it's, you know, transparency. They want to know what their government is doing, how they're spending their money, and what's going on, and they want jobs. But we hear those things all the time. They want to have a better quality of life here. And I think that we hit on two really important things tonight. I'm really glad that we got the update from Mrs. Seltzer, my, my efforts with creating a subcommittee for what's going on with the county parks and with the recreation funds to make sure that it kind of meets the needs of everybody and they have a really good, open dialogue about what they need and that we don't just make decisions that are one-sided. We really want to hear from everyone. And the other thing is jobs. And I think that, I don't think, I know that the manufacturing school is a really important component to creating those jobs and also maintaining the jobs that we already have here. We do have a lot of industry, we do have a lot of manufacturing here, you know, my heart is with agriculture, but the other part of Cumberland County, that built Cumberland County is manufacturing. And we all know, we always tell those stories, oh, well, when, you know, this factory left or that one left, you know, everybody left, and we lost all this money, we lost, we lost all these things, you know, everything that was so great. And those people are coming back, they are here. We have the Vineland industrial park because at its max capacity. We have manufacturing exploding here in Cumberland County, and we want to make sure that those people stay here. And the way to make them stay here is to make sure that they have the workforce that can actually work for them, that understands the training, that has the expertise that they demand in order to continue to stay here. So this is an incredibly important part of that, and just sort of reacting to what we were told by the public that they really want to see here in Cumberland County. So I'm excited about this first phase of the manufacturing project and to see really what this offers and kind of maybe brings back Cumberland County a little bit to their glory days that we all talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mera?
Thank you for saying, no, I don't have anything to say.
Have a Commissioner Sorrow.
Commissioner Sorrow, you want to unmute?
Commissioner, are you there?
Yeah, that's progress.
Okay, you want to speak to, you want to speak to the public?
Yeah, progress. I think, I think we kind of covered about almost every aspect we can cover, so we'll just be one. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Close the Commissioner's reports. Do we have reason for executive session, sir? Do I entertain a motion for adjournment?
We'll make the motion.
Second.
Call favor.
Aye.
724.
This has been a QBC television production in association with our partners and sponsors. QBC broadcasts on Comcast Cable Channel 22 and livestreams its programming on Facebook and YouTube. All rights reserved by Quinn Media and QBC, programming that serves the South Jersey market.